To call this meeting of the Anchorage School Board to order at 6:07 PM on September 3rd. All members are present in the boardroom tonight, including our student representative, Mr. Pack. With that, I will ask Mr. Pack to lead us in the flag salute.
I applaud the religions to apply, having nine safe of America, and to very proud of it for which it stands, one religion under God indivisible, with better TV and justice for all.
And would also ask Mr. Pack to read our land acknowledgement for tonight.
We acknowledge that we gather here today on the traditional lands of the Denina people of Upper Cook Inlet. Thousands of years the Denina people have been and continue to be the stewards of this land. ASD is committed to diversity and inclusion, and it's with honor and respect that we recognize all indigenous people who live and learn in our community.
Thank you. We do want to welcome you to our meeting and thank you for attending and supporting the work of the Anchorage School District and this board. Board thanks students, parents, teachers, staff, school business partners in the entire community of for your investment in the district with your time, your talent, and your tax money. With that said, first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. And would also ask if any, before we approve it, if anyone wishes to pull items from the consent agenda to be action items, and I'll note that item number five memorandum zero two four has already been pulled. Any others? Seeing no hands, member Jacobs.
I move to approve the agenda as amended.
Go ahead, a second, seconded by a member Wilson. Without objection, we have adopted the agenda as amended. First up, we have our student representative report back again to Mr. Pack.
Thank you, Mr. President. First off, I hope everyone had a wonderful Labor Day weekend. For my report today, I just want to jump straight into what the executive board of the student advisory board has planned for our first meeting of this year. First of all, we're going to introduce our offices and advisors and have everyone, you know, get to know each other because we're going to have fairly new members, even sixth graders this time. And then we'll go over our own constitution and then learn how to adopt the agenda and then explain the minutes, all the procedural stuff. And then we're also implementing a new thing where in the past, it's been school spotlights, like in the form of just presentations and slide shows, but instead this year we expanded so that students can film content from their own school and kind of have the creative liberty to make the school look as amazing as it is or even better. And so with that, we can also get more content that ASD can share for like an insider look at our high schools and middle schools. So we're looking forward to that. I also get the chance to recap the past three board meetings, or actually even the ones before the summer and inform students about what's happening during these meetings. We'll have our very own member lessons there and she will be school board member representative. Thank you for that. And then we'll also have a time for us to follow up on some of our resolutions that we passed last year and see where they stand today. We'll also get to choose our school business partnership reps. It's one middle school and one high schooler. And then after that, we'll talk about more partly pro resolution processes. And then for final things, we are going to invite a couple SAB representatives to help be greeters on the Association of Alaska School Board's Safety and Wellbeing Youth Panel, and there's a summit that's happening, so get to have some Anchorage voices there on those matters. We also would invite students to represent at the Ford NGO slash Academies of Anchorage Ceremony on the 25th. And finally, I would like to cordially invite all the members of this school board to attend our meetings when you can. We love your presence there and we appreciate your prudence during the meetings. So that wraps up my report.
Thank you very much. Don't see a representative for a military report in the audience. If not, we will wait until next meeting. Board and conference committee reports are filed written. Most members have a report to make, member lessons?
Thank you. I don't have a written report. I just wanted to highlight at least one of the items on our recent finance committee, which I think is of interest. At the last meeting, we had a number of items on the agenda. The first one was an audit plan over the coming year. And I just wanted to flag for everyone that the board or the finance committee recommended that the administration move forward with P-card audits, addenda audits, building access control audits in support of student safety and allotment usage at our correspondence schools. So those were the four items that were targeted in that discussion, and I thought that was useful and helpful for planning for the year.
Thank you very much. Member Jacobs.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Not a report from governance, but did want to highlight because it has come up a few different times at our meetings that the patriotic exercises for policy did pass out of governance, and I'll be working with you as chair to get the calendar to a future meeting for review and consideration by the full board. As directed, the committee considered the board policy, amended it, and we'll be happy to discuss once the time comes. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other member Wilson?
Just briefly, the communications committee meeting, we did discuss the potential of moving the legislative luncheon up to mid-October, so the administration is looking into the potential for that. We also had a, an update from our academies of Anchorage, and we will continue to have those updates every meeting as well. So I wanted to add, as well as our community updates, which, which we have in our communications update, which we have every, every meeting.
Thank you. I'm hearing a noise. I don't know what it is. But we have people on it, so we will move ahead. That concludes the report section of the agenda. Would like to move to goal monitoring, college career and life. Superintendent Bryant.
Thank you, Mr. President. So we'll start resuming our goal monitoring sessions for this school year. We're going to start off with a technical presentation on college career and life readiness, specifically the interim goal on on track to graduate, which the board recently approved with its updated set of goals and interim guardrails that we've previously discussed. We'll have our more robust conversation on this topic at our next board meeting. This is just our technical report for those listening in. So moving on to the first slide. Here, we've stated for the public what that finalized CCL goal is, which is to increase graduation rates to 90% in June 2028. And one way that the administration will track this is through what we call on-track status. So that's at the bottom of this slide. And you'll notice that it's defined by a specific number of credits that students have earned prior to the end of their either ninth, 10th, or 11th grade year. You can see that sliding scale. It's our theory of action that if more students are on track to graduate, that will actually have more graduates at the end of every year, so we can meet that goal on behalf of the board. Next slide. Here, you'll see the percent of students that are on track to graduate over time. On the graph, the dotted lines represents our annual targets. Just to remind the board, we have a pretty ambitious goal to get to 90% on track to graduate by 27, 28. We suspect that if we can get there, there's no reason why our graduation rate shouldn't be pretty close. So we'll be monitoring this over the next several years. If you're curious to know about what the percent of students that are on track now is, or rather in 23, 24, that's in the, the chart below for your reference. Next slide. And as usual, we would like to provide this data broken down for the board by grade level. So here you can see on track to graduate nine, 10, and 11. For your reference, green and blue are where we want to be. And you can see that there is some green and blue on that slide, meaning that we're on track. We have a, a strong number of students that are on track to graduate based on their grade level, particularly in grade 10. And then this slide will provide that same information, but broken down by special subpopulations as well as gender, race, and ethnicity. And from here, you can compare the June 24% of students on track to graduate with the June 23 percentage of students on track to graduate. And then as usual, we want to provide the board with some information as to what is the administration doing now that these goals are set. So the next two slides will focus on that implementation strategic planning. So on this slide, you'll notice the approach that embeds the role of professional learning, courses that are offered to students, their rigor, the collaborative data collection and discussion that's happening between educators and our district team. And then also the role that parents and community members and other partners play when it comes to improving the percent of students that are on track to graduate. It truly is a system-wide effort. But to get into the specifics, this is a slide I'd like to leave the board with, which would be our implementation strategy. Next slide, please. This is our implementation strategies by strategic pillar, which range from curriculum, instruction, professional learning, data discussions, and multi-tiered systems of support. To get to the punchline, you'll see some familiar strategies here, including our implementation of the freshman academy career exploration course that provides students the opportunity to start conceptualizing what their long-term schedules will be in high school. You'll also see reference to specific targeting of students and of course leveraging our professional learning communities. And then leaning into our existing partnerships such as equal opportunity schools. So there are some familiar strategies here, and there may also be some that the board hasn't seen in the past. And just as a reminder to the public, we adopted these goals, I believe, last month at one of our board meetings. So this is fairly hot off the press, and now that the interim goals and goals are finalized for the next five years, now is the time to, to move forward and to start implementing strategies for our students. And with that, that concludes the technical presentation. At our next board meeting, our team of experts and myself will be here to have a robust conversation on outcomes with the board.
Members from the board. Questions from the board, I'm sorry. Member Wilsons.
Yeah, can you, I know that we'll dive into the data next time, but on slide three, it says that 23, 24 percentage includes previously excluded pass fail credits earned. Could you tell me what that means?
Sure. Mr. Gustafson, I, I think he wants to wait until the next meeting to go further into that. Yep. So we're going to capture that question for the actual discussion, if not sooner.
Member Jacobs.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If this is on here, please just let me know if I missed it. Does this slide that capture five-year graduation rates?
I believe, are you referring to slide three?
Very well could be. Well, just in general, I guess, yeah. So the, what I think I understand is that the 71.4 for 23, 24 is for your graduation rate? Or is that five here?
Yeah, that's a great question, member Jacobs. Great technical question. So this is the percent of students that are on track to graduate. So if you look at that slide, it encompasses the students in grades nine through 11 that based on the number of courses that they have successfully completed, gotten a passing grade for, they are on track to graduate. There are very low likelihood of needing remediation and that sort of thing.
Apologies, that was me. I got wires crossed. Thank you.
And I'll follow up on that. Do we, do we have specific strategies that we think achieve that? I mean, 5% increase is notable. I'm just wondering if there are specific things we did.
Sure. So all of these interim goals are aligned to that board goal of improved graduation rates. So to really zoom out, the on-track status is just one piece. The other piece to this would be the coherent completion of CTE programs of study that we will discuss with the board in a future date, as well as for the first time, tracking the success of students in their coursework. So the percentage of students that are meeting that 2.7 GPA or higher, we do believe that three, these three interim goals, along with the accompanying strategies, will get us to that improved graduation rates. If you look at slide eight, you'll see a more robust detailing of what those specific strategies are. I'd like to wait until our next board meeting to go into those strategies in more detail.
Dr. Bryant? I, we do have an answer for Kelly's question because it might help with her thought process over the next two weeks asking questions. I'd like Eric Bachman, if you don't mind, to answer that question about that percentage difference.
That's great. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Bachman is coming. Mr. Chair, may I just?
It's their short words, yes.
Remind, just remind the board that this is not the discussion time, but you're supposed to write your questions down and send them in. So we can have a more robust and inclusive discussion. So, but this is not tonight to do that, but it's back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And Mr. Bachman.
All right. Thank you. So to address board member lessons question, I'll do this quickly and we'll continue the conversation in two weeks, but as we were preparing this board report, a couple of us noticed a notable discrepancy between data that was being pulled internally compared with the data dashboard, which is of course our public facing data. So we looked more deeply into that and discovered that there are a cohort of students who are earning pass fail grades. It's not being calculated in their GPA. Those students' grades were not being pulled by the internal metric, if you will. These are students, and I looked them up today, taking classes like work experience, mentorship, ROTC, summer program, vocational ed, classes that aren't based on academic standards, but rather participation, who are earning credits toward graduation. So those students were not being included. It's a very small percentage, less than 1% of total grades, but we wanted to make sure that our reporting was accurate for you and also that it aligned with data dashboard. So everything that our public is seeing, our educators are seeing is accurate and consistent, and also the same information you're getting.
Number lessons.
So that was recognized in last year's data that we were able to pull the pass fail students, the students earning non-academic credit. That's encompassed in the 71.35%.
Correct.
But there's no way of also identifying that within the, the data for 22, 23?
There may be, and next week or two weeks from now, when we present, Deanne Carroll, who worked with us gathering the metrics, will sit with me as sort of our technical expert. She can do that, but we're quite confident that the 71.35 reflects credits earned toward graduation, including all students, which was the goal.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other questions or comments by the board? Seeing none, we will move ahead on the agenda to section D for public comment. This is a time where the board listens to the public to come speak to us. We don't engage in discussion or question and answers. And we have time reserved at the beginning for student comment. We have no student signed up tonight. And on public comment, we have one member on a non-action item, Mr. Ace. If you'd like to approach the dais. You will state your name for the record, and you have three minutes and the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Holloman and school board members. My name's Corey Ace, teacher and currently AEA president. Been in this position, this is going in my fifth year. I know, can't believe it. You guys are amazing. It's been a long, a long road. We've talked about, I wanted to speak to the work session and the conversation around retention. Because I feel like there was a lot on recruitment, but not a lot on retention, which really is our most important issue facing the school district only after student progress. There's no more pressing issue than your staffing. And we have a staffing, we're still in a staffing crisis. I've shared in prior testimony that in my experience, in my volunteer experience with search and rescue, when people face a crisis, an emergency situation, they kind of fall into three areas. The first third of, of people will actively engage in solving the problem and getting, getting themselves out of the emergency situation. The second will panic, exacerbating the situation, and the third will freeze and do nothing to support themselves in getting out of this situation. Which one are we in? Are we actively getting out of this crisis, this emergency situation? I'd like the evidence. I don't think we're panicking either. We are absolutely frozen in time. We have done nothing since I've become AEA president. I've brought this up every single year since that time, since COVID. We have actively been going down, frozen in time, like it's going to just reverse itself, like we have nothing to do for this process. I understand that compensation and defined benefit, our retirement is absolutely number one and number two for our educators. Absolutely. That's why they're leaving because they can go down to a lower 48 urban district and pay, make $30,000 more dollars in Seattle and have a defined benefit. No doubt, it's a no-brainer. The third thing is work-life balance. But you have control over work-life balance. We have control over work-life balance, but we're not actively engaged in that. I have shared the data with you. I, we don't need more poll surveys. I have data for you. I've done surveys year after year with your membership. Last year, how do you feel about your 23, 24 workload? This was in October. 21 out of 1,166 responses. 21 said fantastic. My workload, my work-life is fantastic. 241 said it's pretty good. 271 said it's so-so. 427 said they were overwhelmed with their workload, their work-life balance. And another 206 said they can't keep this up. It's not going to surprise you which ones are leaving and what we've done to, to help that. I just want to say retention saves money through recruit, right? Less recruitment efforts, retention betters our schools, it betters our culture in our schools and the community. And the number one thing retention does is it increases student progress. It is the best investment you can make is in your staff.
Thank you very much. Seeing no other names on the to-be-heard list, we will move to section E of the agenda, the consent agenda. And I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda as listed.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those and I guess we can, we're all here. Is there objection to adoption of the consent agenda? Okay, we will take a voice vote. Ms. Sullivan will call the roll.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Lessons?
Yes.
Member Bellamy?
Yes.
Member Wilson?
Yes.
Member Higgins?
Member Higgins?
Yes.
Member Donley?
Yes.
President Holloman?
Yes. You have approved the consent agenda. That brings us to action items. First on the list is ASD memorandum one five eight. I can have a motion to adopt.
Mr. Chair, I move to refer this matter to Governance Committee.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to refer this to committee.
Let's speak to my motion if you'd like, Mr. Chair. Yep, thank you. In coordination with Member Lessons, as well as Member Wilson, who I believe are the sponsors of this board policy revision, or I'm sorry, the board bylaw revision. It's been determined that the best path forward for what lies in front of us right now is to refer this back to committee, take a second look and ensure that we're bringing back a product that both honors the intent of the, the sponsors to wisely utilize time. Board members have to expend to appropriately gauge with our community while also recognizing the value of community council meetings and the role that they play. And then informing the public of district activities. So would ask support. We'll take this up in governance as time allows. Thank you.
If there is no further discussion, Ms. Sullivan will call the roll. This is a motion to refer this back to, or refer this to the Governance Committee.
Member Bellamy?
Yes.
Member Donley?
Yes.
Member Higgins?
Yes.
Member Wilson?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Lessons?
Yes.
Student Representative PAC?
Yes.
President Holloman?
Yes. We have referred item number one five eight back to governance. Next on the agenda is ASD memorandum number zero one six. I can have a motion to adopt.
So, Mr. Chair, this item was postponed at our last meeting to a date certain, which is today. So I believe there's already a motion on the floor to approve the current version. However, a substitute memorandum has been prepared by administration. So at this point, I would move to substitute memorandum zero one six. I think the addendum language on there is a, for BP five one three one dot four three. Would ask for a second.
Second.
Moved and seconded to place the substitute motion before the board. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So would ask administration clarify if anything I say is off base. My understanding is the substitute memorandum bifurcates and affect the two different sections of language that were amended in BP five one three one dot four three. What remains is the language regarding parental notification, regarding options for reporting concerns of harassment, intimidation, and bullying, including an option to report concerns anonymously. And what has been cut away for the time being for further refinement are the definitions that were placed further down in the policy on the following page. My understanding is administration is going to review, refine, and then bring that back through committee and then back to the full board. So at our last meeting, this was discussed and there seemed to be little concern and broad support. So that's what's in front of us at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Other discussion? Seeing none, we are voting to adopt the substitute motion. Changes to board policy five one three one point four three. Ms. Sullivan will call the roll. Correct. A yes vote would place the substitute motion on the floor for consideration. Yes, Member Bellamy?
Is that, that is the, the substitute is what's attached to the agenda?
Yes.
Just making sure. Okay. Thank you.
Member Higgins?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Bellamy? Member Donley?
Yes.
Member Wilson?
Yes.
Member Lessons?
Yes.
Student Representative PAC?
Yes.
President Holloman?
Yes. So before you now is the substitute motion for the revisions to board policy five one three one point four three. Is there a discussion? Member Jacobs?
Yep, thank you, Mr. Chair. Wanted to express appreciation for district administration and the board for supporting this relatively minor measure, but I think one that will have broad impact. We saw hundreds of reports put through our, our new system, STOP-IT, which for the first time allows students to anonymously report concerns of harassment, bullying, and intimidation. I think the, the hill that remains yet to be climbed is bringing about increased awareness. And so my hope is that this board policy provides explicit direction to administration that all families and staff should be aware of these options. And I am looking forward to reviewing data later this year or early next year as to how this board policy brings about increased awareness and what will likely result in additional reporting. But in turn, hopefully a better atmosphere within our campuses. So I appreciate the leeway and support. And thank you for the consideration.
Other discussion?
Member Lessons? Um, I think I just wanted to take this opportunity to extend my appreciation to Member Donley for having raised some particular questions that fell under your legal expertise. I think each member of the board genuinely brings different backgrounds and assets to all of our conversation. And this was a case in point where you had a sense of something that needed recalibration and adjustment, and I appreciate that.
Any further comment? Seeing none, I'll ask Ms. Sullivan to call the roll.
Should we have this, should we have a second on the main motion? Second was Dora, I think. We stepped on each other.
Member Higgins?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Donley?
Yes.
Member Lessons?
Yes.
Member Bellamy?
Yes.
Member Wilson?
Yes.
Student Representative PAC?
Yes.
President Holloman?
Yes. You have adopted the substitute motion, revisions to board policy five one three one. That brings us to the third action item, and I need to ask the board's indulgence. This was acceptance of a donation from a volunteer at Sand Lake Elementary. I asked the person who make, is making the donation to speak to it. Told him I didn't think there was any way we would get to it before seven PM. I thought that was a pretty good estimate. We, we're running kind of fast here. Would anyone object if we consider our non-action items but return to this third action item? When that person shows up and speaks for a few minutes? Seeing no one objecting, we will move to item G to return to section F, the non-action items. Are there any comments on any of the non-action items from board members? And these will all be back before you at our next meeting. I take it there is no continued, no one has signed up for public comment. We're on track for a record here. We will move to the superintendent update again. I hope in just a few minutes, we'll return to action items.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wish I had the skills to do a twenty-minute filibuster, but I think I only have a good two minutes in me. So I just wanted to provide some brief updates that our school, our schools are back in session and we're continuing to gather feedback from the community, from board members and from principals. And really, the name of the game is making adjustments and fine tuning over the next couple of weeks. What I'm noticing is that we're seeing the community get settled into the back-to-school routine. And for example, in partnership with the municipality's traffic engineer, we're seeing improvements to traffic flow. That's just one area in which we're seeing some progress because of our collaborations and our listening to feedback. Another area, we've been monitoring data and collecting feedback on late buses. Every year presents additional challenges. For example, we're not entirely sure how many students will utilize transportation services until we start asking students to utilize those services. The additional variable this year was the increased number of students attending middle school at all of our schools. So there were some hiccups, but we've already made some positive adjustments to some routes impacting Mears, Begich, and Goldenview routes. And we're still collecting additional feedback so we can fine tune as needed in the coming weeks. But I do give thanks to our community that raised the concerns and also to our transportation professionals that really tackled the, the logistical puzzle of correcting and refining bus routes. It certainly isn't easy. I'll also provide an enrollment update. So on the tenth day of school, we were at forty two thousand, three hundred and seventeen. That is a decrease of nine hundred and four students from this time next year, or this time last year. So we are continuing to monitor enrollment. I think it's too soon to go too deeply into what does this mean? Really, the next big snapshot for the school board's awareness would be that oasis count of enrollment that takes place in October. From there, we'd be able to understand the full impact of our enrollment numbers and to advise the board on how this could impact revenue in the short term and also long term. And then each week, we also provide the board with the enrollment update that you should refer back to. So you can see where the trends are, but essentially elementary enrollment is the issue more so than our secondary enrollment. And it, it's just one theory, but I think it's a reasonable assumption that this again lends to the idea that one, more families are choosing correspondence education or alternative education. But two, there are just fewer young children in the community and therefore in the system. And there are other theories too, but that's one framework to really understand the impact of our decreased enrollment at elementary. And then lastly, I just wanted to underscore that progress continues to be made. We still need to be out there in the field, talking to principals, talking to the community. And we're thankful for the community's patience and willingness to help us work towards those solutions. And that concludes my remarks.
Thank you very much. We'll start with member comments over to my right, Member Bellamy.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, I wasn't attempting to, to participate in any filibuster, but I did have a question for the superintendent.
Yes.
Okay. Dr. Bryant, I had inquired earlier if this might be possible, and if it's not, I understand if this needs to be sent in board docs. But I'm wondering if administration can discuss, since the bill became law today, House Bill three forty four, how it impacts school districts to include ASD and what the path forward looks like. Feeling free to get more technical than we might otherwise. So if that's possible, I think we've got time and hopefully there's interest from the board too.
Sure. To the President, Member Jacobs, that, that's a reasonable question, and I will proactively phone a friend who are Senior Director of Mental Health and Student Services, who may be able to provide the answers that I can't, but I'm going to attempt to answer the question. So as we informed the board about two weeks ago, the passage of House Bill three forty four, which we anticipated, is not the final step in the situation to improve access to reimbursements for Medicaid-based services. Really, it was, I believe in twenty twenty-two that the National Center for Medicaid Services provided guidance. State, nationwide, the asked states to create a plan to make reimbursements for Medicaid services more accessible by FY twenty twenty-six. That led to the drafting and the adoption of House Bill three forty four, which eliminates some of the statutory barriers to reimbursing for the full breadth of services that our, our students utilize and wouldn't in future years be eligible for Medicaid reimbursements. So now that the bill has been passed as of, I believe, either today or late last week, the next steps is for the Department of Health to enter its next phase in planning. Because even though the, the statute has been adjusted, as you can imagine, the, the bureaucratic interagencies that utilize that statute have a lot of regulations to adjust and fix and address, and ASD is one of those entities. But I can say that we're proactively working with deed, with the relevant state entities. So that way, on their end, their compliance matters can be updated to align with the new statute. And then also on our end, that we'll be ready to receive these additional reimbursements as soon as possible. I will shout out our special education departments and student, uh, mental health and student supports office for stepping in and being proactive in some of the steps that we shared with the board a couple of weeks ago in our weekly board connect. In summary, the passage of the bill is a positive step forward, but do know the runway for long-term systemic changes would be prior to the end of FY twenty-six. Dr. Knutson or Ms. Wayne, is there anything that I missed?
Mr. Chair, could I follow up? Uh, Member Jacobs? Yep, thank you. I appreciate that. Could, if for no other reason than the public's benefit, I guess, could we tease out specifically what happens next? And is there anything the Anchorage community or the board can do to expedite? Are we waiting for dust to settle? Or is there a state Medicaid plan that needs to be updated? Or is it really just making sure that we're all familiar with the new landscape for what services can be billed? And waiting for policies internally to catch up? And what's, what's preventing us from submitting a claim next week?
Excuse me. Through the chair to Mr. Jacobs. Right now, ASD is working on an internal plan that is supported based on the information that comes from the state. There is a conference that is coming up that we will send some of our members, our, our team members to, to continue that work. We are in the process of creating a comprehensive internal plan so that this process is sustainable and something that can last very long. Right now, we have one Medicaid coordinator with another position that will be posted. But also with the collaboration with the mental health and student support departments, we're looking to increase the opportunity for funding sources as it relates to Medicaid reimbursement. And because this is not something that ASD or our state has done at, at this scale, we have to develop that internal plan for it to be sustainable. So we, one other piece, we currently do, we do submit claims on Medicaid based on the things that we are eligible of receiving services for right now. We are also increasing one of our, with one of our vendors so that we can work through sending out more claims to get reimbursement for. So we had a lower version of the program and we've updated it to a higher version so that we can push out more claims.
I follow up, Mr. Chair? Yes. Thank you. And appreciate that. What I think I understand is that in addition to the claims that could be submitted for services that, to be clear, ASD is already providing, as I understand it, that the universe just grew for services that became billable for, again, things we're already doing, right? And so that's, I think, why I have a bit of sense of urgency. It's not that we're looking to, to, to provide more services, although they're certainly needed, to be clear, right? Our staff are already taking time to perform these services and we can get reimbursement, which in turn can bolster our staffing. And so it's of interest to me to ensure that we're taking those steps to, to get on, on board and up and running as soon as possible. Is there anything that the board can do to support your efforts, I guess, is, do we think that the salaries for the, the specialists who are performing the coding and billing work is commensurate with what we can expect? I mean, those folks, they generate a ton of revenue, and so they make solid wages because of that. And so the return on investment on those positions is high. Do we anticipate being able to fill that position with someone who's, you know, quality and can get on board here before the end of the year? Or what does it look like?
We, we do hope to fill that position, the person that was in that. We, we do hope to fill that position. The person that was in that Medicaid technician position has been um, has been promoted to our Medicaid um, coordinator. So we do hope to fill that one um, position that is uh, I'm working on a job description for that specific position because now we're going from a team of one to a team of two. Um, but if, if we, through our research, if we find that the wages aren't commensurable and things of that nature, we'll definitely um, share that with Dr. Bryant.
One last follow-up, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Um, if, I guess what I would ask is if your team of two needs to become of team of three or four, um, if there's work to be done and again, for services we're already providing or should reasonably be providing, um, given the, the scope of what's allowable now in a post um, House Bill three forty-four world. Um, I hope we can expect to hear so, because we've, I know I would for one would be glad to um, move an amendment forward in our, in our budget. Because again, the ROI is a hundred percent there guaranteed. Um, and we saw that through the municipality, through their Medicaid billing process. I, I know that the return on investment would be the same for us. And so appreciate um, you folks, everything you folks are doing to get on board as soon as possible. Please let us know if we can help support. Um, I'm excited to, to see what comes next out of it. I, I did want to take time to, to give kudos to um, those who were involved at the legislative level for passing um, HB three forty-four, because it really, I think, will be transformational here, maybe in a couple of years, but hopefully sooner. Um, Senator Tobin, Representative Mina, um, Speaker of the House, Representative Tilton, um, the DOH and uh, deed commissioners, I think, provided good feedback. And um, of course, the governor for not vetoing the bill. So, thank you and thank you for the leeway, Mr. Chair.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Any other questions to the superintendent on the report? Seeing none, um, at this point, we will touch back into action items. If I could ask for a motion to consider ASD memorandum number zero two four.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve ASD memorandum number zero two four, acceptance of donation, Sand Lake Elementary Library renovation project donation.
Second.
Yep. And moved and seconded. Um, it's unusual that we have the maker of a donation to the district actually be present. Uh, usually it seems like it's federal or state money. It comes from far away. Um, this is from someone who volunteers in the district and was available. Like to ask Mr. Halcrow if he'd be willing to come forward and just speak to how he thought this up and, and what he hopes to see happen from it.
Evening, Mr. President, members of the school board. My name is Andrew Halcrow. Did you just want, did you just want me to tell a story?
Um, I, I think so, that, that you're spending time in the library and came up with ideas for.
Uh, so um, this, uh, this came about a year ago uh, when actually I reached out to uh, President Holloman and said, hey, uh, I've been wanting to volunteer my neighborhood local school for years now. My schedule is finally to the point where I can. So he told me to go online, uh, register a, a volunteer registration form. I did that. A couple of weeks later, I got a very nice email from the secretary at Sand Lake Elementary School, invited me to come in and volunteer, and I said, wait, I, I don't have any kids. So, you know, just because I think the first thing she did was told me to contact my child's teacher. And I'm like, look, I, I don't have any kids. So uh, she uh, she said, would you like to volunteer in the library? And I said, absolutely. So the first day I showed up, the librarian, Tom Brenier, met me at the door. Um, and I volunteered, I'd go in once a week, four or five hours, stack books, check books in, uh, and it was fabulous. But after the first three weeks, after the, the first three weeks, my mind started wa, wa, working overtime. Um, and I started watching how the students moved throughout the library and looking how much time they had to find a book and how difficult. And I started to look at all of these things from how fast it took a student to get to a book, to how they were accessing a book, to what their patterns of behavior were after they got the book. Um, was watching traffic flows within the library, because a lot of the more popular uh, titles uh, were grouped uh, on lower shelves in the corner. So what you do is you get all the kids that would queue there and the shire kids would back away, so they wouldn't have a chance at the books. Um, and when you look at a library, it's like twenty-five minutes. Uh, Tom does an amazing presentation for probably ten, ten or eleven minutes, uh, a class and then sets them loose. That means a student only has twelve to thirteen minutes to find a book. Um, so you know, started looking at these things in my mind, and of course, I'm building this framework in my mind. And one day, Tom, uh, the, the librarian and I were standing there and uh, he made a comment that just kind of opened the floodgates. And so we stand in there, started to riff and this, and we could do this, and we can move that here, and we can get shelving, and um, I said, okay, so let's think about this. So uh, I came up with a process and I sat down with both the school librarian and the PTA president and vice president. I said, okay. Uh, I'm willing to invest uh, personal money in the library. Uh, but we have to do a poll of the students first. We need to find out what students want in their library with uh, a heavy focus on uh, one, two, and three, because with the move of six to middle school this year, I wanted to focus on uh, the younger students that would enjoy the library for two or three or four years. What is it you want to see? So we asked him four questions. What do you like about your library? What don't you like about your library? Uh, what would you like to see in your library? And there was a fourth question. Um, but the survey results came back really amazing. Uh, Sand Lake Elementary School has a, a, a very nice but limited uh, student reading area. Uh, and thirty percent of the respondents said that they really enjoyed the reading area. So that was the first thing. Uh, the second response was the highest percentage responded that they didn't like when kids, other kids disrupted their library hour, right? So that's not, that's something obviously Tom, the administrator, has to work on. So we took a, a, a look at the results, um. And we said, okay, so we came up with his initial vision, uh, but as we brought in outside designers to look at the library and identify what we could do to um, not only make the library more accessible, upgrading the technology, i- improving the wayfinding, getting kids to books faster, increasing and improving and expanding the uh, quiet reading areas. There were some other things about uh, kind of providing uh, uh, the library with a budget. So when, bottom line was when we started to, to look at this project, of course, our vision started getting grander and grander and grander, right? So after the initial meeting, uh, what we started was going to be twenty-five thousand, ended up being about a hundred and fifteen thousand. Um, then I pulled back and said, okay, uh, we need to make this a more broader effort, right? This needs to be more than just cool beanbags and new books. This has to be kind of a concerted effort. So what we did at Sand Lake Elementary School is we had built a triangle. So we have the PTSA whose entire focus this year is going to be contests and student engagement and outreach regarding reading. Um, we are going to make, I am personally going to make resources available to the PTA this year. So that's what they can do. They can focus on promoting reading, promoting contests, student outreach, parent outreach, and not have to worry about fundraising. Um, the second thing we wanted to do after we brought the PST TSA on, on board was meet with Principal Thompson and say, okay, I'm going to bring in private money. We've got PTSA that's going to do the backbone, the work of the school, the outreach. Now we just need a commitment from you how we can work together to kind of create this solid triangle where we can focus on reading scores. And let's create a three to four-year plan. Uh, you know, I'll bring in private money. Uh, we'll structure the programs around reading. Uh, the principal and the teachers, of course, can, can do what they do. Um, so after a couple of weeks, we all three came together and said, let's do this. So, you know, this is going to be a, a, a really finally answer the question, does private money into public education, can it boost reading scores? And so for the next three years, uh, I think the initial commitment this year with the support for the PTA, I think by the end of this year, um, the investment will be about a hundred and fifty thousand and hey, as long as they keep grooving, I'll keep moving. Uh, my wife and I, we absolutely love our neighborhood schools. I'm an ASD graduate alum. She, she, I graduated from East, she graduated from West. Got two kids that went to ASD. My daughter Alyssa graduated from the IB program at West. Thank you very much. It saved me a semester Ivy League tuition. Um, you know, so we love ASD. Uh, and also is, you know, a recovering politician and a public policy wonk. Um, I recognize that public schools are really under a lot of pressure now. So.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments from the board? Member Higgins?
I, I just want to say, I, I had a chance to work with you with the school district. I appreciate all the public service you've done and you've never been anything other than student focused. And it always focused on trying to make a difference. So thank you for this and thank you for everything else you've been doing. I appreciate it.
Well, you, you remember Pat, um, I was, when I was president of the Anchorage Chamber of Commerce, I was chair of United Way. Uh, it, uh, ninety percent by twenty twenty for two years. And so, you know, I, I spent hours and hours in boardrooms looking at education data and reading scores. And now it's like, it's so exciting to me because I'm on the ground and I can actually try and help move the needle. So um, but you know, my investment is well made. The principal at Sand Lake is u- unbelievable. Uh, the librarian, Tom Brenier, I mean, I've never seen somebody who, who loves his job as much as he does um, in the PTSA. And so really the principal, the librarian, the PTSA are why I feel comfortable making this investment and will continue to do so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I do want to say thank you from the district and the board. Um, and also the, the, the first thing you felt like had to be done was a student survey. Because so often they're the last people we ask or we just expect them to respond. Um, everything about this is just really impresses me. I um, think it's fantastic you'll be in the room to see what the outcome is as we do this.
Yeah, and I'm hoping to, I'm hoping that, you know, other people will realize that they can invest in their neighborhood schools too.
Hmm. I, I have to ask if you see a correlation between spending time in an elementary school and gray hair accumulation. That's a
Not me, right?
Chamber of Commerce, your hair was much darker.
Bring the thirty kids into the library. Me, I'm in the corner shelving books.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Without, uh, oh, member Wilson.
Just wanted to say thank you. Appreciate all of the, the time commitment. Appreciate you coming to share the story. Because that's, that's incredible. There's um, a lot of incredible people like yourself that are doing wonderful things in our schools. And so you sharing that. It's, it's kind of like, I, I often say, we watch the news and see all the negative, but don't get to see enough of the positives. So I, I appreciate you coming and sharing um, all of your efforts and, and, and you, you basically literally putting your money where your mouth is, um, and investing in our school. So thank you.
Well, my, my, um, my wife and I, we love the school district and um, we appreciate the job that each one of you does, especially in today's environment, because it is, it's, it's really tough.
Member Lessons.
I just want to say this is really exciting. It's uplifting. It's inspiring. Um, the board has made early um, literacy a, a priority. Um, the state has as well. Um, but we can't make progress with hopes and dreams alone. We need uh, support. And support comes in many, many ways. And an optimized library flow and optimization of student enjoyment of that space. By golly, that's part of that process of wrapping our support around our kids to improve um, lifelong outcomes. So thank you for um, the inspiration and I hope there are other community members out there who um, could be equally inspired um, to support schools in their neighborhoods through their time, through their talent, through their contributions, whatever they, whatever they're capable of, of investing in their schools. So thank you.
Yeah, even volunteering.
Yep, volunteering.
I mean, it's just, it, there's nothing like volunteering in an elementary school. Because you just see the world from a different set of glasses.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Member Jacobs and then member PAC.
Yeah, uh, thank you. I'll just echo um, appreciation for your support of our system of public education. And I also wanted to add that um, your support of the academies of Anchorage and the dramatic, but I think promising change it will bring um, to is also noted and supportive. So thank you.
Student representative PAC.
Um, as a student, I just want to say thank you for your generosity and the great story today. Um, not that I'm complaining, but our library is open. As, um, you're an amazing role model and I wish to see more members like you in the community. Thank you.
Any other comments? Uh, Superintendent Bryant.
Mr. Halcrow, I just wanted to sincerely thank you on behalf of the administration. Your generosity is incredible and I've spoken with Principal Thompson at length about this and the excitement that he's noticing um, as a result of your contributions, um, just mean the world to us, especially in a resource scarce environment. So thank you.
Yeah, and, and again, I um, as a former lawmaker, uh, and somebody who was in Juneau for four different years, working on education funding, um, I, I know it's, and I don't think it's going, I hate to say it, I don't think it's going to get better anytime soon. Um, so I think it's time for community members to step up because this is, you know, this needs to be done.
Any other comments? Uh, member Bellamy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Andrew, I think I remember, I know I remember you and Vicky when you guys were in high school. Anyway, it is really nice to see and hear of your commitment to education, to our community, to our students and to our families. And I mean, you're a rock star tonight with or without, or a superhero without a cape tonight. So we thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Any other comments? If not, I will ask Ms. Sullivan to call the roll.
We have a motion.
Yep.
Thank you.
This is to approve memorandum zero two four.
Member Bellamy? Member Higgins?
Oh, yes.
Member Lessons?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Wilson?
Yes.
Member Donley?
Yes.
Student representative PAC?
Yes.
President Holloman?
Yes. You have adopted memorandum O two four. We thank you very much, Mr. Halcrow. Have a good evening. We will pick back up on the school board and administration comments, and I'll start way to my right with member Bellamy.
A lot of time for my friend on the other end. Anyway, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, just a couple of comments. Uh, I did attend the first um, uh, Quality Municipal Services Committee, which is a new committee uh, that the Assembly launched this uh, last week. And that committee will be looking at quality of life issues around parks and rec, education, libraries, equal rights, equal opportunity, equity, social justice, ethics and elections. So I will bring back to the board and the superintendent what that actually means for the Anchorage School District. Um, that was the first meeting. Um, and so I suspect that over the next few months, we'll be having uh, several meetings and then there will be a final report. Uh, I was glad to hear our student advisory board, uh, um, representative, uh, talk about the youth uh, safety forum. Um, we participate, it's a kind of a, a quick turnaround, because I think that that meeting is the middle of September, which is shortly after you guys meet. So I'm hoping that you guys can get, uh, we can get a couple of students. I think we can have three participate in that. I'd like to remind, um, I, I, I not even remind, but just encourage uh, our staff uh, to attend the conferences in as much as we are able to do so. Participate in those professional opportunities that are local. Uh, and coming up, we have the woman in Ed Leading and Learning. Um, uh, and I will be attending and I'm hoping other, uh, we can get other uh, of our members of our, and our staff to attend. I think it's well worth it and a good investment in our staff. Uh, along with that is our prin, the principal conference, which is going to be during that, I think it's that, the day after the woman leading uh, woman in education, leading and learning. Uh, hopefully we can have, uh, come up with some opportunities for our principals to be involved in the principal's conference. It is a little earlier, about a month earlier this year, but I think it'll be well worth our investment. Um, hoping to see some presenters at the AASB uh, annual conference here in Anchorage in November. Uh, that is our, uh, uh, annual conference here, uh, statewide co, school board conference here in, in, in Anchorage. And I'm hoping we can, um, whatever presenters we can get, that we will have some Anchorage people on the docket for that. Uh, and, and if possible, I'd like an update in Board Connect uh, relative to the uh, federal funding for houseless students. I had a brief conversation with superintendent today. I think we're okay, but just looking at the impact of whether we're losing funds. The article was great. Mr. Mayo, David Mayo Keely did a great job of explaining and discussing our program. But if we can in Board Connect, if we can get a an impact of where we are, that would be great. So with that, I'm gonna pass on to Ms. Lessons.
Member Lessons?
I just had two things. I was able to attend the opening of the Creekside Park Playground last week. It was a beautiful evening. Extremely well attended and the playground took my breath away. This is an inclusive playground. If you are a student who has requires a wheelchair or maybe you've broken your leg or whatever, for whatever reason, you know, you can't walk over the curb required to get to the gravel pit or the shredded tires where the swings are. This is a fully inclusive playground. When you stand on it, it's mushy. I think I heard that you could fall eight feet and not be hurt. So bring your kids, bring your grandkids on the weekend or the evening. It is just extraordinary. So I wanted to celebrate the people who dreamed it. Thank the the folks who have organized the fun. I know we approved it, but thank the folks who did the work to install it and to make it happen for our kiddos. And I will cross my fingers that we can use that as a model to improve our playground accessibility across the district because it is amazing. And the other thing I wanted to just celebrate is I do like looking at our data dashboard. And I know that the year is early, but our attendance rates are up this year so far. And I know that it's only a couple of weeks. But for no other year in the past four years have we had as many grade levels above or well above a ninety percent attendance rate. So K through nine are all over ninety percent. And ten, eleven and twelve are pretty close. Actually, grade twelve is right at ninety percent as well. So sophors and juniors just pick it up a little bit. Everybody else, keep it up. And I think that's something to celebrate. So I'm especially with the start time changes. I am interested in monitoring how that is impacting our attendance. And thus far, it seems to be strongly supportive of improved attendance rates across the board.
Member Wilson?
The September edition of ASD Digital publishes on Friday, and there will be updates on all of the big projects, including how ASD is keeping track of our school year launch, specifically school start times and middle, the middle school move, new shine bright moments and the launch of our Attendance Matters project. And if you missed our communications committee meeting last week, you can check it out on our YouTube page. And you'll get an update on communications, our community outreach and the Academies of Anchorage project. Thank you.
Student representative pack.
Just one thing, I do want to go over in our next SAB meeting, and I've talked about it a lot, but I'm actually going to bring this packet of the Alco monitoring for students to look over and maybe our older students can ask questions and formulate them so that I can present them at our next discussion. So that's just something I'm looking forward to.
Member Donald?
Thank you, Mr. President. In 2020, the school district's administration at that time adopted some guidelines for dealing with transgender issues. And one of those guidelines suggests it's not typically necessary to advise the parents of secondary students regarding changes they may wish to make in in their gender or their name or their pronouns they use. And last year, I introduced a resolution that would, for the first time, have the school board itself set a policy regarding that. Of course, my suggestion that our policy not be presuming against notification of parents, but in favor of notification of parents. At that time, there were pending federal Title IX regulations or suggestions from the the federal, the president regarding how to deal with these issues to school districts all over the country. And the decision was made not to consider or proceed with examining a board policy at that time pending the the information that were the recommendations or the mandates, they may be mandates coming from the federal government. Those mandates as applying to were recently issued several months ago. And were subsequently blocked by litigation in, I think, twenty six states. But ten days ago, the US Supreme Court on Friday, well, about ten days ago, they barred the Biden administration from enforcing parts of the new Title IX, even parts of the new Title IX regulations. The court rejected a request from the administration to allow the less controversial parts of the regulation to go into effect in states where it has been challenged, pending lower court review. So I do think it's it's past time that the board take up this issue and actually considered what an appropriate board policy should be regarding parental notification. So I'm gonna again just ask that, I think it's time that the board do this and not just merely be an administrative guideline regulating, controlling this aspect of parental notification here in our district. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Jacobs?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. The only board comment I have tonight relates to a side role, if you will, I've had over the last year, which was possible, was made possible because of my role in the board, but wasn't actually board business. I was asked to be a part of the implementation team last summer related to Proposition fourteen, which passed in the twenty twenty-three municipal election and effectively allocated marijuana tax proceeds to bolster childcare efforts in Anchorage. Over the last year, that group has met and monthly and this past July, a ordinance, I think it's AO twenty twenty-four sixty-one S sixty-four S one was passed by the Assembly mid-July unanimously, which effectuated municipal code, setting up framework for a accountability board to distribute the funds that are collected. Today, the the report from the implementation team was released and it effectively encourages the board that will be appointed by municipal mayor LaFrance to consider utilizing funds for the purpose of both reducing the cost of childcare as well as adding funds to providers' pockets to reduce costs of overhead and make wages higher, which in turn should reduce turnover and vacancies and in turn provide additional opportunities for childcare in our community. The the work seems relevant, given some of the concerns we've heard around start times. One of which is the limited amount of childcare available in our community, as well as the lack of at least after school services for at least some families. With that said, one of the other intersections between our workers aboard and Prop fourteen specifically added language in the charter that gave preferential treatment to proposals or opportunities for those funds, which at this point, again, are about roughly ten million dollars to opportunities where excess elementary capacities or school capacity within the Anchorage School District could be used to provide opportunities to expand childcare access for citizens in the municipality. And so I'm excited to see where that intersection or how that intersection takes shape, especially as we continue to have our right sizing conversation and look at the option of consolidation. There are districts that have done some really amazing work surrounding the intersection of excess capacity in elementary schools and the need to address the availability of high quality and affordable childcare in communities and are making that, making space available in buildings to provide either reduced cost or in limited cases, free childcare as a retention bonus for employees and in turn freeing up resources in the broader community for families. And so it's an option, you know, based on the last presentation from administration. I think we're certainly interested in exploring. Looking forward to see where that goes. And I'm hopeful the board will be open minded as we attempt to address some of the broader challenges in a way, unique way that we can be of assistance while we're also having our right sizing conversation as a district. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Higgins?
Well, I want to thank you for the way this board, you know, session has run. It's rare that I've got three and a half hours of comments. And so if anybody needs to take a break while I'm talking, I understand. The, again, I'll just, once again, comment and just say, I have known Andrew Halco engagement with the school board since two thousand and eight, when I got involved. And he has always been analytical. He's always been really focused on community service and everything he's done. So I really appreciate his presentation today. I have been visiting some schools and it's been really informative. I mean, we saw the presentation with Bartlett High School with the renovations needed. When you visit and you see buckets catching water and you realize the temperature varies in in some areas, thirty or forty degrees, you know, in different times, you start to get a good presentation of of a good understanding of what the needs are. I hope that one of the things that we do when we review over all the options and issues out there that are going on is that we look at all the opportunities, whether we can expand it. I mean, there's been a lot of issues out there where people have or groups have provided updated boiler systems where you pay back on the savings. If we can do that for a large number of schools, we'll save a lot of money. We'll move it in because some of these boiler systems, you can't have them fail. And they're so expensive to operate. They've been there since the school was was built, you know, forty years ago. So or more. And so it's it's really a good opportunity here to look at what all, what are all the options we have. Because we really need to address that. And, you know, I've been visiting other schools. I would recommend encourage board members, other board members to do it. I'm going to hit a lot of schools this this month to get a good view. The pandemic issues are over. There's no problem in doing it. And you get so much information on the conditions and you get feedback and the reception from all the schools is just so positive. When you show up and you just listen and and there were so many departments out there that we connect with. And when you get a chance to talk to them, that's great. I appreciate that I had a contact with with the grant coming in from Big Group. I don't know where that's gonna go. I'm sure it'll be brought in front of us. But I, the public involvement with the schools is always appreciated. And this was is a real nice grant issue. So with that, I won't make people take breaks and stop with it there. But thank you.
Thank you. I'll also say I had the opportunity to be at the opening of the Creekside Playground and Mr. Anderson gave a really good explanation of how it all came to be in terms of how it was funded. And that it is the district's first truly inclusive playground. And I had not really thought about that. I've seen some of the playgrounds that had more modern equipment. But the fact, one of the, there were two students that cut the ribbon, one of whom is in a wheelchair. And she was able to turn around and roll onto it and participate just like all the other kids. And when the the principal finished his short speech, kids rushed it like it was the last hot dog on the planet. And it really, it's just, it's a great thing to go watch when we sit in meetings like this, we distance ourselves from really the joy that a lot of our students have when they go out. The only downside to that is it is terribly expensive. But it won't catch on fire. It is and interesting to me, as someone that grew up when the playground equipment killed people, the design of it kind of harkens back to monkey bars. But in a way that it's hard to fall off of and it's hard to get hurt on, there's a something is a modern iteration of the old merry-go-round. But it's made to where you can't spin it fast enough to make kids fall off and break an arm like we used to do. They really are, I think, looking at some of the equipment that we grew up with. You know, when I say we, I mean, old people that we really love and going back and and getting that spirit of it, but making a modern version that won't create so many liability lawsuits for the district. So it's it's a neat thing. It was back to school night. Attendance is very high, although the principal noted it was higher than he had had for back to school night in some years. And the the energy level was just through the roof on it. Also touching on member Jacobs, I got to serve on the steering committee to get Prop fourteen to the ballot and passed. And former board member Croft really was the driving force behind keeping that effort going. It took a couple of years. But he also has been in some of the meetings and and said he was really impressed with the ideas that the representative from ASD are coming up with, then that there is a potential to use some of the space in our schools to up childcare opportunities to possibly assist staff that you know, we we have teachers that they're looking, teaching couples that are looking at possibly one of them dropping their career in order to stay home, take care of kids because it just doesn't pencil out. But the potential to put childcare in our schools for either staff or community is just a bonus in a whole lot of ways. And yeah, I hope we will be creative about that. It'll look different than anything we've ever seen before. But potentially help everybody involved. And lastly, I just want to say, I think one thing I've heard from a number of people made an awful lot of changes to the start of school this fall. And for people that have worked in a building on the first day of school, you know, it's just kind of like a controlled chaos as you work through the day. But one of the things that keeps it from going out of control is a big cadre of people that have done it ten or fifteen times or you know, that have the experience to kind of see it coming and and help manage things. We don't have nearly as many of those people as we used to. And also, there was a bunch to the beginning of this school year that's not like it's ever been before. We've never had that many sixth graders in middle school. We we haven't had, you know, the order of the start got changed and it's a big adjustment. Again, we decide things and we put things in place. And then we count on staff to make it work somehow when all those kids show up and you've got to do something to make that all work. So I do want to say thank you to staff, both support staff and the instructional staff for doing everything. The fact that our attendance is up is heartening. I think the other big shift for old people is that when I was a kid, you went to school. But we really are in a position where we have to make kids want to come to school. And that takes resources that are thin. We've been shaving our electives. We've been shaving some of our activities, just don't have the personnel to do some things that would draw kids into the building. We're still counting on staff to somehow support all that, even as our support for them gets more and more diluted. So with that, I really appreciate everything that's happened so far. And we ask superintendent if you have further remarks.
No further comment, Mr. President.
Anyone from administration? Seeing no one rushing to a microphone, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
We are adjourned. Thank you.